Evening, Mayor. Welcome to this full council meeting of the 3rd November 2025. Do we have anybody speaking in the public session? Very much. And do we have any apologies for absence? If we have a colleague who may make it earlier in the meeting, so we can ask the House of Mordu and the Council of Jemmy.
Thank you. Martin.
Oh.
And Council Martin Schreier, who is daddied to us.
And do we accept those apologies?
Yeah.
Thank you. And declarations of interest, any declarations of personal or traditional interest under consideration on this agenda? In accordance with the Legals and Acts 2011, section 26 to 34, as scheduled for what?
Please explain what all of this is. Please run us through this.
Okay, so item three on the agenda. And is.
Apologies to you.
Good evening. And item three on the agenda is minutes of the full council meeting held on 15th September and the extraordinary full council meeting held on the 22nd September. And do we agree those, I propose them?
Yep.
Agreed.
Seconded.
I'm happy to second it.
All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much. And that's for both. And then interim minutes. With the interim council meeting held on the 30th of October. And. Everybody agreed to those, I propose them.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. All those in favour?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you very much. Plan Committee, we don't have the Chair, we've got the Vice Chair, the Vice Chair and Plan Committee. And please propose for this and Plan Committee meeting, or meeting for all bits.
I propose them.
Um, in a simple.
Oh, sorry. Twenty minutes.
Thank you very much.
We see you. We don't. Chair, I don't think we need the both. On these, we just receive them.
Okay, sorry, yeah, I'm going over the top with it. All right, and town centre events committee.
Both the minutes to note, the Town Centre Events Committee just likes to say thank you to everyone involved in the fireworks at the weekend and all staff and everybody involved in it. And also would like to contribute to the event in the, what they call it, the Vice at the University to do with diversity. And just make tribute to Ravina and those people involved in that. It's nowhere on the agenda to mention it, I'd just like to say it was a wonderful event, well attended and and we learnt a lot about the life of Mike Hall and his family, which was very uplifted.
Thank you.
Thank you, very, very pleased. Thank you very much. Resources Committee. Sorry, Environment Committee, the Vice Chair and the Vice.
We've seen him. Oh, no, he's not on here. So the minutes are received.
Thank you very much.
We see you.
Agreed, received. And Staffing Committee, look, I'm going to carry ahead on myself again. And Resources Committee.
Yeah, I present the first of September minutes for members. Received.
Thank you very much. And Staffing Committee. Council Harvey.
Yes, that's me. I present the minutes to you, the short minutes really, just electing the Chair and Vice Chair and that's fine.
Thank you. Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, so moving on to items ten on the agenda, section 106 wishlist working group. And we've got a report from Mrs Anne Clark.
Fairly straightforward. The section 106 wishlist needs a proper review, needs some time putting into it. I would recommend that this is done by a working group who can consider the options in detail in the report back to full council.
Yeah, copy that. Anybody wish to speak on that? Council Sturridge.
Just to propose that we agree the recommendation.
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Schaefer. All those in favour? Are we going to, I thought you nine, so are we going to ask for volunteers for that now or put out one of those?
Not the case, yeah.
Thank you very much. Excellent. And then the next is Aylesbury Vale Transport Users Group.
No.
No, we missed. Yeah, because I'm going to go in front of us, yes. Sorry, my brain's not comfortable. And reports from both councillors. We have councillor Adye Ossobogen is going to sit this evening. And I'd like to invite him to give a report first, if that's so.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. And it's a pleasure to join the household again, Mr Pugh. Always late, but this time happy to be here to give this report personally. I think my first report's going to be on the tree planting mission. The council is currently taking steps to improve capacity to plant more trees within the county. It has targeted about 543,000 plus trees. It's currently planted about 216 plus. It's the belief that by expanding this target to include trees that are on other lands, not council lands, but they're either funded or in partnership with the council, you'll be able to reach that target faster than that one. So that's one of the strategies we sent it to the past. The other one I'd like to draw attention to is the L N R S, which is the Local Nature Improvement Strategy. It was also used at the past. That strategy seeks to help in recovering the county's biodiversity gain. The council has one sort to see how the, so it's funded by the D F R and we will review it in five years' time. But interim, we're taking steps to, one, conveying partnerships with interested parties. So if the town council will be interested in identifying specific locations within the plan, that's will be back into part and work with the town council in that regard. We will also be, we'll also be monitoring how that's delivered. The key point here is that it doesn't change people's rights on ownership of their lands. It's mainly guided as to if you want to help achieve corporate biodiversity within the county. These are key areas that we believe can help achieve that faster. So it doesn't change the rights you have to your land or how do you use your land, which is the main medium of guidance. I'd also like to draw attention to the increasing S E N E capacity. So the council has this need to one of its assets to be used for its social needs, children within the county. So I think that will also be beneficial to the town. That's currently in the process and I'm sure that will be delivered in the very near future. In regards to what works, there quite a lot that I've been on, continue to encourage for T D S M A Street. If you have any bubbles you want to raise, there are schemes that will be planted for the next four years, which I believe Shagels has had a discussion around that, I'll talk to you about that along this one as well. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. And Council Harvey?
Thank you. The question is about the lighting in the car park. It's been out for quite some time. Just want to know when the lights in the car park are going to be fixed. They have been reported.
I would always recommend that if there is any light, it will be called a flash screen.
Yeah, they have been done.
Call it to me and I'll stick it up. This too.
And Council Harvey?
Let's see, I was out for a walk on Sunday morning with the Ben's Walking Group and we ended up doing the bottom, sort of southern end of the school's playing fields. And I noticed, or we all noticed, we've been there recently as well, is that all the vegetation between that path and a ditch that runs into the stream have been removed, I mean dramatically so. Trees have been cut back, vegetation and so on totally taken away. I'm wondering if this is part of some project to make that ditch a release or water to go on the nearby houses. But I was, you know, giving you mention of biodiversity. And I know that Munchacks live in that area, because I've seen them also in parts. Was that considered before releasing all of that underground, you know, to the ground level? I mean, it would grow back. But it did concern me that it is all gone and on the town council, we weren't aware of it.
So that's a specific project, I'm not fully aware. But what I know is getting the balance between flooding issues and biodiversity score. There are quite few digital elements there. And we're encouraging that to ensure that water flows faster out of front of the area. So that might be what it is, I'm not 100% sure what's happening there. But I know that's one of the things we're trying to encourage as well. But trying to encourage our parent, all of the areas, this is, I'm sure we have less flooding risk in the town.
Again, ditches need to be cleared, but does all the vegetation need to be cleared too?
Well, hang on, I must stop, I must stop about the project. While I know that's one of the things we're trying to push, to get our parent almost to fill out their ditches and take out the riverbanks, because that's the best way we can start with what other town. Thank you.
Any others? I was just going to ask you, Adye, you said that the send capacity being increased. Can you give any detail on where and how that's being done?
Well, details will come in due course. One of the assets, one of the county's assets, which was used for another purpose, have been repurposed for send. And that will come with.
Is that in Buckingham?
In Buckingham.
Okay. And how much capacity is that likely to give?
Well, to the product delivered, I can't say how much capacity it will be. But I know that's also designated for it. Also, again, improvement on current capacity.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll go to Council Schaefer.
Thank you. Yeah. I would like to mention that we had a meeting last Friday that Council Ossobogen already alluded to, to indeed set the priorities for the capital roads programme for the next four years. We came to an agreement, this is now with the officers to cost up. And therefore I don't particularly want to say which ones will be funded and which won't, because we don't know when we set this, we set something as a priority, how much it's going to cost. We are not the technicians to do that. But yes, we did all get together with the officers to agree on some priorities. So hopefully over the next four years, some of these at least will be delivered. And of course, that doesn't necessarily cover individual potholes, which will be done out of the maintenance budget. And so, you know, they don't go on that particular list, but there may still be additional fixing of particular patches that are in a flat state. And that's, I think, the main, one of the main things that I have been involved in. I did drive around the entire ward and look at all the straits and made notes on them, which was an interesting two afternoons. And we have the Transport, Environment, Climate Change and Communities Committee tomorrow. And trees will indeed be on the agenda, I know councillor Haydock will join us and ask a question. The question that was agreed at the, or it was agreed at the last Environment Committee here, that she would put a question as a member of the public forward, and that has been put forward. So we'll hear that first tomorrow.
Thank you. Your question to Council Schaefer. Council, Roger Newham.
The highway budget, does it include pedestrian crossings or pelican crossings and issues like that? Or is it just for delivery?
I am not entirely sure. It does include pedestrian areas, so footpaths. It's a relatively small budget for the entire county for footpaths, but we have got some of those in there. I don't think it includes, I'm not sure whether in theory it could include pelican crossings. Possibly one of the other councillors who's been on the council longer than me can answer that question. But I know we didn't talk about any of that.
Any other questions to Council Schaefer? Council Sturridge?
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Firstly, I did send a report to try and cut down what needed to say. Just on the, thank colleagues for putting together the highway stuff on Friday, won't go into the detail now. But those type of crossings aren't in those works. You can't do that in those schemes. These are designated road schemes, footpath schemes. And the budget is what the budget is. And we discussed that, but we will look at asking questions around that. We also, just which wasn't said, we also were looking at what would go on in the future and having further discussions after this year to see what, where we could place next year. So that was that. The thing that I was going to talk about, which is something the dyslexic I am concerned about, is you will be aware that the consultation on send, which was 0.5% across Buckinghamshire, is 1.5% on Buckinghamshire. That in effect is.
So I can like, that's cuts.
Cuts.
To their purpose, yeah.
Yeah, that is 1.6% to Buckinghamshire. There is an explanation in the, the full explanation of the Cabinet memo to why that is, which is in the report I gave you. My main concern with that is that £112,000 out of Buckinghamshire is a large amount of money to find. And to that end, I will be continuing to question these matters in the future. I am also be at Tech tomorrow, following up on a question which was led from councillor Harvey and the mayor, who have been looking into this to do with bus routes, to do with Silverstone and Westcop, and see what can be done to try and get people to take those routes and see whether there's any grounds the council can look to try and improve that. Of course, they are not council routes, they are publicly funded routes, they're probably funded routes. But it's well worth mentioning, because the paperwork at Tech did not say that much about Buckingham and it was a bit light on the ground when it come to us in North Buckinghamshire, because we haven't got a train station and we only have a bus station. So that's our main route of communication. And we do need to make sure children do have access to employment and not everyone can afford a car. So that's, it's logical. Going back to the send question, one of the questions which needs to be answered is how they come about the decision and how it come about, but I will be taking that forward in another way. But I will be at Cabinet, all being well, next week and think, ask, add you a question hopefully around our situation to do with Buckingham flood. And I'm sure you'll see it in a pattern. And because there are some realities around it, we had a meeting and we found out that the money which was given by the government to fund investigations wasn't as we thought it would be to be kind. And we need to establish how we can look, why that was and how we can look at these schemes which are known about in Buckingham, see whether there's any grounds to push them up the importance. Because we all know the town floods and we all know that there's something needs to be done about it. It's just about finding a cooperative way to do that and move it forward, which none of these things will happen overnight, if they do. I've been waiting for some of these schemes for 15 years for one. And I've been waiting since 1989 for another one. So nothing moves that quickly in government, but we must just keep the profile of these things up. And if we do no more than keep the profile of these things, that at least it stays in the ambience of the discussion. And just maybe one of the five different projects which are on offer may get taken up in the future, which would be a relief to those who are flooded and a positive to all those implementing.
Thank you. Any questions for Robin? And also Sam?
Yeah, what a comment, as you mentioned just now about bus transport length, because we don't have a train station. Because all three Shire councillors are here. So the question that is there any plan to make a dual carriageway for A421 or 422, at least to M1? So that traffic can run more smoothly.
I like that in brief. At the end of the last cycle of Parliament and the last cycle of the council, which was afterwards, they, you will realise that the expressway was removed in the previous government. And then there was some looks at feasibility study of the A421. That consultation went to various meetings. It was discussed and it's sort of run into the ground with the election, I think would be fair to say, and hasn't got started again. Although what we do know, the developments which have come forward and been agreed and got planning are taking contributions out of their section 106 agreements. Because in Buckingham, we only have section 106 not sealed. And with the O S U way development, I believe there was £800,000 put into that section 106 for duelling of the A421. What we don't know is where that scheme is. It's a worthy question, but I'm waiting for another meeting. And I should imagine all three of us would quite like to know where that's progressing. But since the new councils arrived and the new governments arrived, it hasn't been a subject which has been an update on, to be fair to the council. And that's where we are. I think we're as interested in knowing the outcome of that, whether we're for it or against it. We want to know the outcome of it, because delivering, there is no transport links between anywhere. And the A421 tends to be our main corridor link. And it's an arterial route to the coast, so it's a major road. And partly, we discussed maintenance on it the other day, which is maintenance. But you are, thank you for the question, I will, and I'm sure my colleagues will do the same, go away and do some investigation, see where it's got to, but we haven't had another consultation. The previous Chair of Clanning, Mark Poll, and his deputy, Anthony Ralph, went to all those meetings to do with it. And I think they were like all of us, waiting for where it was going to be. And that's an honest answer, because there is nothing, there's no proposal, only that we know that the area in Milton Keynes where they're going to develop by the woods, that's down for duelling. But that's the area from the bottle dump roundabout what used to be, that area. There's money in that section 106 for duelling. So I think it's a piecemeal operation. One thing I do know is Buckinghamshire Council hasn't got the money to duell it. So it will have to be a strategic decision of government or it will have to be paid by some other means. Because that's how it'll have to be done if it's done at all. And I'm sure when it's the roof chiseled, they'll be problematic in that.
Thank you, Robin. And can I just, is it not Highways England, our local council, that's, that's really?
Well, all the meetings I've been to have been with highway officers of Buckinghamshire Council. I have never met highways in, and I'm sure they'd like to meet me. But I'm sure that'd be fun for them. But they've never had the privilege to meet me yet. But if anyone wants me to introduce me to me, I'm sure they'll enjoy that.
Thanks for John.
I was just going to say, I'm pretty sure that the new bridge over the HS2 and the 41 on the way to A43 is single carriageway. It's not dual carriageway then. So whatever's going to happen, it'll have to narrow it down to one lane as it goes over the HS2.
All right. Thank you all. And the next item on the agenda is. item 12, Aylesbury Vale Transport Users Group, which we've got a report from Mrs Anne Clark.
Sorry, sorry. I have not, that's more drab than the group has, well, is no longer actively operating. But they are happy for us to keep hold of their details and that we need any advice or want to run anything by them on an informed basis, then they are still happy to talk.
Council Schaefer.
This was, I think, memory serves me right, it is obligingly on the agenda for the Tech Committee tomorrow, not as an item in itself, but it has certainly been mentioned. It has been mentioned that, and I will dig a little bit deeper into this, that, or there has been some talk that the community boards might be able to take over some of that function. I'm not currently sure how that would work or whether this is a serious consideration. I look forward to asking councillor Bowles that question when I have an opportunity.
Thank you, Council Schaefer. Anybody else? So we've got a recommendation to note that the Transport Users Group is no longer operating and will be removed from the list of organisations that have an official Buckingham Town Council representative.
Just to note that the council will need all those meetings. And it must be quite sad that it's finishing, because you were still, still walked to attending those meetings.
Council.
Well, I think just to say, as with a lot of these groups, it was difficult to keep going when there wasn't enough officers to kind of make it happen, particularly the secretary and so forth. And I think it would be just a question that people who were more actively involved in it in terms of running the group retired. And they've got to an age where they want to give off and do one of things. But I think it's also probably a casualty of the unitary council as well, because there is no Aylesbury Vale. I mean, Avalk is going the same way, just to give you a heads up on that, Avalk is a cursing business. Because that structure doesn't exist within the Shire Council dimension, according to the council. So I think it's up to us as a, as a leading council in more Oxfordshire.
Oxfordshire.
It's a very big, it still is Oxford, but. Did the council write?
Certainly, council are a folks.
They're so often in variety ways. Yeah. I think it's up to us to do some of that negotiations, as we started on last Friday with the meeting with Stage Church. You know, we can, we can help broker some deals with the bus providers and also take a strategic view of it. I mean, the insight from the chap from Stage Church, he said at the moment, there's no plans to back on the X5. But of course, they'll wait and see what the impact of the cross east-west rail will be.
Yeah.
Because if all the passengers who currently use the bus switch to the rail service to get to Milton Keynes from Oxford or vice versa, then it could begin to call on question of viability of the X5, which currently is commercial viable. It's not subsidized, it's a commercially viable independent service. So I think watch this space. So there was a good heads up from him, but I think it's up to us as town councillors to think of ways which we can help people in our town connect to places around. I mean, one of the other ideas was to maybe talk with, I think it's a reville, that's a choice, that runs a service from Lordhampton to Brackley, whether we could try and extend that to Buckingham. And he goes, well, that service does. So there are, there are options, but I think it's up to us to kind of think about some of the stuff and maybe there's context and have those meetings and see what we can, see what we can organise. You know, within the bounds of what's viable and yes.
Thank you, John, and thank you for all the time you've spent going to those meetings. I don't know if Council Sam had actually been to any of the meetings yet, no. Okay, thank you for offering to. Okay, so we did it to Royal Max, where it's a note, you know, that. And it's a court here in the cemetery, which has got a report from the Estates Manager, New Cemetery and Allotments Project Progress Update.
Oh, it's going quite well, the firm has been passing now recently, you can see how the work is, is getting on. In fact, as expected, our custody surveyor, who's basically the person that we, we pay and contracted to make sure that our contractors are doing their job properly, has been pretty happy with what's going on. And the biggest unexpected, well, it's considerably higher than expected for angling and water. The, I'll still estimate it at the moment, our Q S is doing their absolute best to try and work out with angling and angling, angling and water, how we can get those, possibly get those costs reduced. But ultimately, obviously, we're going to have, we need water, it's an allotment and cemetery, so it's going to have to have water. And they do have a bit of. And they do have a bit of a monopoly. So basically, we can't, there's no shopping around. That's what they say it's going to cost. We can argue and request a requote and try and tweak things, but ultimately we will end up paying it. However, we obviously do put a large amount of money aside for contingencies. This is exactly the source of contingency that that money is for. We still expect at this time that the project, if you include contingencies, will come in under budget.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We had the estates manager for this work. And he was such a.
Just say thank you for the report. It is good to be able to monitor the progression of the project. It's question is always gets asked by other places in how did we get to do this project? And it was a very long time in the coming. So it's nice to see that we are managing the finances. It's also nice to see that town clerk is open about the difficulties that we go through the project, which is angler water. We aren't there yet. Just to say that going that way injure it a lot. I do look at it a lot because it's right in my eyesight and it's quite encouraging seeing the progression. I also noticed on my visit to the village at the weekend, there was people out there, even on a Saturday or a Sunday out there with some great big boxes, which must be part of the planting. I can't think what else would be in boxes in the middle of the field.
Some hedging.
Yeah, and so what they are progressing, so that.
It's not burying people already.
No, I just see. I think I'm very alive to one thing yet, I didn't imagine, but just to say that we are watching it. It seems a long, we all went, or those of us who were fortunate, went to the plant of the outside trees. And it looked like some of that other stuff. I hope they have easier digging than we did. In that space, because it was quite hard work. But it's progressing and I suggest that anyone has opportunity, who knows as I am.
Bless you. And councillor Harvey.
I was just going to say that the available video for burials is all from twenty twenty six, last week, the official opening in Halloween.
Okay, somebody else got any questions about the cemetery? Thank everybody that's been working to get to the stage that we're at. The list is item fifteen, Buckingham neighbourhood development plan update from the town clerk we go.
Still no official date for the referendum. However, I have been asked to quote for the use of Lace Hill for the twenty second of January. So that is definitely the date that they are working towards. Not official yet, but looking pretty likely. So sorry, I've got nothing more. I put it as a verbal, so I think we're absolutely expecting a bit more than that, but that's where we are.
That was such a.
Thank you for the update and thank you for the possibility of a referendum. I hope that in the not too distant future, we'll get a date for the referendum because may have people who worked hard on that. Previous two chairs of vice chair and chair of planning along here, we closed the group down at this stage, but there was so much work gone into that. And so with time invested in it, it'd be nice to have that as everybody else did actually put to the public. So thank you for that. And if you do get an actual solid firm date, we're all open to ears.
Thank you. Is that for people to go and vote at Lace Hill?
Yes.
Okay, because I thought it'd be in town, so it's not.
Panto's on in town, that's what she said to us desperately. Again, I can't speak for them, but my understanding is the plan is to split them off themselves and that less than being one or two.
Okay, of course. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much, town clerk. And the next one is item sixteen, finding the primary measure section found to note that there have been no events. So you've got the measures, it's all fine. All noted. Action list. Item seventeen. Any questions on that? Or comments?
May I? On the first action, the public meeting to discuss health provision in Buckingham. This has been on the action list, it's twenty one. And it says to review it at an appropriate time. I would suggest that with the health centre project being run underway. We're just holding this open now indefinitely. We should consider closing it.
I've really probably right. And I think if my memory serves me correctly, it was on there to try to liaise with the Swan Practice to see how things were going with their plans. And because they were stalling for whatever reason, they weren't stalling, their plans were stalled. For whatever reason, it became an outdated thing. So I would agree that that we remove that now from the action list because the health centre is getting built and it's doing very well. And when I saw the practice manager, when we were setting up the fair, they said they're hoping to be in by August next year.
Oh, yeah.
Nice, yeah. Councillor.
Have we put it on the action list in twenty twenty one? There was just more than the Buckingham Health Centre it was to do at the time. There was discussions around the hospital and Bucks Health Trust, those things. We were assured, I think, by the previous chief executive that the last friends at Buckingham Hospital meeting that they had no intention to do anything negative to the hospital by the previous chief executive. And it was on there because of that, because we always maintain concerns about our Buckingham Hospital. I expect if we have anything come up, we can put it on to a future agenda. So in the future. So I think having it removed now, we've watched the building go up. It's a relief. We are a long way further forward than we were in twenty twenty one. But it wasn't just the health centre. There was lots of other things going on at the time.
Yeah.
And I'm reassured from the friends at Buckingham Hospital meeting that there's no immediate danger to our hospital.
Councillor Schaefer.
I was merely going to second the proposal that we take it off the master list.
Councillor Harvey.
Just to say, I've been having conversations with the practice manager, managing director, whatever the title is, about maybe some sort of future partnership between town councils and Swan Practice. Something on the lines of what Frem Town Council have been marking on. But watch this space. More information will be coming to the Environment Committee in a few weeks' time.
Good. Thank you. And so not a pressure on second item to remove item three, six point two, probably twenty one from the action list. And all those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, anything else on the action list? Councillor. Heather.
That would be hang up. It sounds like an only X six bus, we seem to be having a bus meeting, so I'm just extending that a little bit. There's a paper at this tech committee meeting tomorrow on bus service improvements. And it includes a slide all about the new Winslow station and the extra bus services planned. So the one that's relevant to us reads that in November twenty twenty five, a new evening service every thirty to sixty minutes between Buckingham, Winslow and Arrowsbury. So I don't know if you heard about that, your meeting with bus companies, but it sounds like very soon we should be getting a more frequent.
So I believe Catherine mentioned that when I was speaking to her in the office in the day because she said that she'd be able to go to Arrowsbury for cinema in the evening. We're going to rest the conversation one day. And Councillor Schaefer.
Thank you for mentioning this. I had noticed it obviously on the agenda for tomorrow as well. It is my intention to also ask a question about whether this could be extended to Milton Keynes. Because I feel that we have, no. We have heard on more than one occasion of people who have found it difficult to take on it. Because they can't get back in the evening and it would. Now theoretically, it might be possible to take the train to Winslow and then take the bus to Buckingham. That seems quite a roundabout way of getting to Buckingham from Winslow. And so one of my questions will be about the possibilities of looking into extending that to Milton Keynes, whether or not that's possible, I can't obviously say at this stage.
Thank you. I think we'll just cancel the Harvey next. And it was something that we talked with State of H Man, wasn't it, the other day, about the later buses and.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it's a different company, St George, and so on. But evening is great, fantastic, inviting everything else, more or less. Because if you're going to be using the Winslow train station for commuting, they could not only get home, they need to get there in the morning. So earlier buses in the morning would also be good as well. So councillor Schaefer could ask, that's the question two. Right.
Happy to. Okay, Dr, Councillor Almit.
Yeah, it is great news there's evening buses planned, but I would like to know whether evening means it's like an eight thirty, nine o'clock hustle. Because for a lot of people, leaving work or coming back, that's just too early. So that's what the main problem with the X five in Milton Keynes is as well, because certain nights it's like nine p.m. Which is no good for the majority of people.
You're all making my question better.
And there's a search for.
Yeah, it might be worth a bit of night time reading. I think on the thirty first, they were discussing in Parliament. I noticed it when I was bored one evening. I read that there's, you know, what the committee said about the ambitions around transport and the growth, the select committee in Parliament, which is not political committee. It was questioning the ambitions and whether the ambitions around providing additional services were robust enough. I think that's fair enough. It's in the public domain. Though whatever those ambitions go forward, those ambitions from government traditional funding for councils to put on additional services is something that really needs to be considered maybe for a future meeting or whatever. But I just happened to sit down there and read it. And thought it was interesting reading, to be honest, because what's said and what done might not be the same as what happens. So that's a polite way of putting it. So you know, it does need money into councils to be able to do it. They can't produce the money to put the services in.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey.
Just to follow all of these discussions, I did have correspondence with National Express, which I've talked before. Who did challenge whether it would be viable for them to put a stop in on the buses. It's an option set by Milton Keynes and London Airport. I wrote back and said, well, I think it would have been viable, but I see in here are some reasons why, but I've not heard back from them sadly. So there was a bit of dialogue. The visiting members are reading, so it's good to discuss tomorrow. But I've got another issue. There's a proposal on the list to remove another item. I'll talk page thirteen, we've got the votes on that as well.
Yeah, we have a multi-agency meeting that's pretty well attended. All of those people take part. I would suggest that that action can be closed and passed on to that meeting to avoid, to negate duplication. Negate duplication, avoid duplication.
Oh, negate it as well. And councillor Sturridge.
With the action being removed, but we do have now two multi-agency meetings running in tandem. So maybe that's something that we need to recognise that we've got if we're meeting organised by a member of parliament in the start of, and now Buckinghamshire Council have started multi-agency meetings. So it seems that we have gone from nothing to lots. So that needs to be recognised in some form or fashion because I can't imagine that it's a free hour round trip from, for the Environment Agency to get to Buckingham. And to get to our, it's a free and a bit hour trip. So and getting all officers together needs to be some care from managers. I should imagine that hopefully there's some proper conversations going on about combining those efforts rather than not, because otherwise we'll have otherwise we'll be competing for people's space and time and that needs to be used wisely. And if the other agency meetings suggested it, maybe. Luckily, I've been involved in flooding since nineteen ninety eight. I've never noticed anything move that quick in flooding, to be honest with you, between now and ninety ninety eight, I haven't seen anything move that quick from Buckingham in a positive way. So if that means that some rig is going to be put into it and we're going to have something happen overnight, I will be the first to applaud it. But I think it's difficult, to be fair, and I think that needs to be recognised.
Thank you, Robin. The action list was to remove our action rather than make comments on other people's meetings. So do we have a proposal? Or?
I propose any.
Okay, I'm happy to second. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Anything else on the action list? We note that the invitation to the King. We had a a meeting in the working group, which we are going to keep our eyes peeled for any anything going on that we, that might fill the criteria, which is quite a strict set of criteria. In order to send an invitation to something, but in the meantime, we will put it on hold. Okay, anything else on the action list? No. Right, thank you very much. So then item eighteen is, oh, what a busy man, I'm being. I've had some great, it's a great time. So I've been to such different, such different things. And it's really, really, really brilliant. And I want to reiterate how great the Legacy in Action event was that Rabina and the Equality Community Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee put together and extend our thanks to David Hall and his family for putting together such an amazing presentation. It was, it was just truly inspiring. So yeah, thank you.
Shame was knocking.
Yeah.
It was funny as well.
And yeah, lots of, lots of love.
Lots of good humour, isn't it?
Excuse me, Rob. And we've been to the Buckingham Summer Festival. They're on a concert, a concert, okay, so then chairs and audience, I don't think we've got any. I was a remembrance craving this coming Sunday. We've had a briefing come out from with that town clerk today concerning timings, et cetera. It should be noted that Corombe's Meadow Car Park is chargeable on the day, but thank you to the University of Buckingham. And now opening Ford Meadow to allow free parking for anybody who is wanting to participate. Looking forward to seeing as many of you there as possible. It's a very important commemoration within our calendar. Yeah. So that's that. Date of next meeting, interim council on Monday, December twenty twenty five. And then full council on Monday, the fifteenth of December twenty twenty five. And I believe it's traditional to red for drink as a council after the last meeting before.
And the mayor's got to bring his points.
Yeah.
Just thinking of that one.
I think that that concludes the meeting. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.